This meeting of the Reading Municipal Light Department Board of Commissioners is being broadcast live at the RMLD's office at 230 Ash Street, Reading. Live broadcasts are available only in Reading due to technology constraints. This meeting was videotaped for distribution to the community television stations in North Reading, Wilmington, and Linfield. The RMLD Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of hearing public comment at the discretion of the Chair on items on the official agenda as well as items not on the official agenda. Since there's nobody here, we probably don't need to say any of this, but we ask that all questions or comments from the public be directed to the Chair and that all parties, including members of the RMLD Board, act in a professional and courteous manner when addressing the Board or responding to comments. Once recognized, all persons addressing the Board shall state their name and address prior to speaking. It is the role of the Chair to maintain order in all public comment or ensuing discussion. There is no CAB representation tonight, nor is there anybody not on the RMLD staff or Board in the room. So with that, we will have John Stempag be Board Secretary. We do not have anybody attending who would be commenting, so we can go right on to the first action item, which is, well, first, a brief report on a couple of things which may necessitate a quick vote tonight. One of them is on the Board vacancy. So, as you know, Bob Soli resigned in September, on September 17th, and he also submitted his resignation to the town clerk. Since then, there's been no movement on appointing a replacement. I asked the town clerk over the past week what the procedure is, because my understanding was that it was automatic, that it would get posted. She says, "No, you need to vote as a Board to ask for an appointment to be made." I don't know that that's, in talking to her again last night, I'm not sure that's quite right, because in the past, I'm told, Jeannie looked it up, and when Mary Ellen O'Neil stepped down, the appointment process was just put in the papers, and we went ahead and we got John here as the replacement, and there was no Board vote on that. And then again, when Marcy West was elected to the Board of Selectmen, vacating her seat, again, there was a similar process by which David Mancuso was appointed, and again, there was no Board vote to ask for that. Am I correct? So, but that having been said, our understanding was that it would be automatic, but I've been told to do a vote, so I guess at this point, we'll follow the town clerk's instructions and ask for some discussion from the Board on whether we want to do a vote to ask for an appointment, or leave it to go to, just go to the April election and struggle on with the four of us. So does anybody have any views on that?
Yes, so I, my view, we have a candidate that was interested in stepping forward for the interim period, and so I think, you know, we still have several months in early in the year to utilize the services of Board members, and since we're down one, so my recommendation would be to go forward and...
Okay. Does anybody else have any feelings about this?
I think that's, I think that's a good recommendation.
Okay.
And we'll go forward with it, and then I think the procedure is have a joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Commissioners in January, and the individuals or individual or individuals can present themselves at that time, just as we did.
Right, right.
And be voted in for the three or four month period of time before they have to run for election.
And my own feeling about it going into tonight was that, given how late we are in the year, it wouldn't, none of this process would happen until late December or January, and it would only be a couple of meetings, and the person would have to pull papers anyway at the same time to be on the ballot. But I'll entertain a motion on the question.
I'll move that we...
Do you want to discuss here?
I'll just make the motion. I'll move that we ask the town clerk's office to post the position and that we proceed forward with appointing a new member.
Okay, so is that a motion? So then, all in favor of that? So I guess we have a unanimous sense of board to ask the appointment. Good. Okay, thank you for that. And apologies to anybody or any delay that, about this, we understood from past precedent that it would happen automatically, and it did not, as it did in previous occasions. In other business, just to briefly report, my hope is that, and maybe now that we're going to appoint somebody, this will have to happen, that we can have a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen and just establish a good working relationship for the coming year. Last night at town meeting, I had a chance to briefly chat with the five members, and had a very nice chat, and they were expressing happiness with Colleen's presentation Tuesday at their meeting, and thank you for that, Colleen. I think we also had a good report from Linfield, and a lot of good things happening at the RMLD that the public is hearing about, and we're glad that the Selectmen are pleased with that, and we certainly want a good relationship. My hope is that we'll, certainly we will have one now with the appointment process, but that even before that, that we can meet informally where we go to their Board meetings or they come to ours. I think that's the way we should have such meetings, is in the public forum. And so that was my, I guess that's my, concludes my report. At this point, we'll move on to, is there any, any comments on any of that?
No.
So that's fine. So now, we're going to move on to the review of the General Manager, and we'll turn this over to John, who is the Chair of the General Manager Review Committee.
Just perhaps starting with a statement, I think all the Commissioners feel that the General Manager, Colleen O'Brien, has done an outstanding job this past year. There's a long list of issues that should have been addressed and programs that should have been initiated prior to the hiring of Ms. O'Brien, but for whatever reason, fell through the cracks. These are now being resolved, and mechanisms put in place by the General Manager to make the RMLD a professionally managed organization and a model, we think, for municipal electric departments throughout Massachusetts. In light of this, and after discussion and evaluation, we would like to recommend two parts to the General Manager's compensation. We use a template we've used in the past, it's a multi-page document that assigns various percentages in terms of how the Commissioners have felt the General Manager has performed during the year, and then from that, we use an equation then to make suggestions in terms of both salary and/or other adjustments. And as a result of that analysis, we'd like to propose that the salary be increased by 3%, and this is a CPI plus 2%, which is at the high end of the range for the salary increase itself. CPI index for this past year has been 1%, almost exactly 1.0%, believe it or not. So the 1 plus 2 equals a 3% salary increase, which would be retroactive back to July 15th, 2013, which is the date within the General Manager's contract. The second element is a performance-based incentive payment that we would like to recommend that covers this past year, 2013, 14, that would be a percentage of the salary called out, again, that for the General Manager contract, this would be a one-time payment, reflective of the significant turnaround and all the positive changes and processes that the General Manager has implemented this past year. It also encompasses the hundreds of thousands of dollars saved in both attorney fees and in performing work efforts internal to the RMLD that used to be outsourced on a routine basis. And so the percentage of that, we would suggest on a one-time basis, would be 6%. I'd like to make a motion to implement this in a motion format if so asked, if there's any discussion.
Yeah, but any discussion?
No, I think John summarized it very well. I think it's been great, great performance in the past year, and I think that has to be recognized and rewarded.
And I think John has spelled it out well, and I think he captured the sentiments of the committee, of the subcommittee.
I would agree. So I, we can just move on, entertain a motion.
I'd like to move that the salary be adjusted for the General Manager to a 3% salary increase retroactive to July 15th, 2014, and that a merit performance payment of 6% of salary be paid to the General Manager for this past year's work, extraordinary work effort.
Did you make that retroactive to July, part of the motion was retroactive July 15th?
Yes, part of the motion was retroactive.
Okay, okay, I wasn't sure I heard that. So I'll second that.
Okay. The, the, the quick frame of reference for this is that the interim General Manager was given a $25,000 one-time bonus, and I think this is actually, this is less than that, and so I think there's ample precedent for giving Colleen originally deserved increase in compensation. So thank you for your work, and we look forward to more good years ahead. Thank you. So all in, all in favor?
Yep.
Yep. All opposed, or for the interim?
Colleen, you want to say anything?
If you'd like to. I'm in the spot.
Yeah?
I think she did.
Thank you.
Okay, good enough.
Okay, and with that, we will now hear from the General Manager.
You want to do the minutes? You want to do the minutes?
Did I skip the minutes?
Yeah, you skipped the minutes.
I did not mean to skip the minutes.
I'll move that the April 24, 2014 minutes be accepted as presented.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I actually owe Jeannie the minutes from June. Someday, I'll actually get to them. She keeps sending them to me. She keeps sending them to me to remind me. Okay.
Thanksgiving Day might be a good day to clean up.
No, no, after I have too much turkey, I'll be sleeping.
Got a feeling May is the next one, right? Just a guess.
So now, we move to the General Manager.
Thank you. Just a couple of topics. We had a nice kickoff meeting with the Reliability and Organizational Study Consultants at the last Commissioners' meeting. Since then, the, both the reliability company booth has started interviewing and working with the engineers that have been out in the field and collecting data, and starting to prepare their deliverables. The organizational study, LIDOS, has come in and done about 15 interviews of employees. They will be conducting interviews with the Commissioners and was also extended to the CAB members. That's going to be occurring on December 11th. I think it's an excellent way to get everyone's input from their perspective. I'm very excited to see what, what their results are and compare them to both my roadmap, Jane's roadmap, Bob's roadmap, Hamid's roadmaps, so that we can have purely independent review for what's the best solutions to, as John stated, to have a professional organization moving forward and staying competitive and keeping some of the lowest rates in the state and the highest reliability. So that, those projects are moving ahead on time and on budget. The other thing I just wanted to mention was the town presentations that are here. We have Jane, myself, Hamid, and Brian Smith, and we've been highlighting, you know, the targeted areas for the organization reliability studies, so everybody's aware of what was part of the scope of those RFPs. The tree trimming program, in which we're going out for new tree trimming contract, we're extending the trim cut, and we have also, Hamid has also posted on the website, it's a little bit of a draft right now, but you can call it up under tree trimming and see exactly where we'll be trimming. It's a map, and it's split out by the four towns, and you can see exactly where we're going to be. So that's moving along. The LED street pilot program is completed. The Town of Reading is going to have an IE address that goes through the town as well as us. The other towns will probably have a Gmail account where any information, comments, if anything is wrong with the streetlight, if it's pointing in the wrong direction, we can have the customers email us, and we'll get those things adjusted. Illumination levels, now is the time for the comments, now that the pilot areas are done. Jane spoke of the charging stations and the commercial rebates and other incentive programs that we're offering. So we were at Linfield on Monday night, we were at Reading Selectmen on Tuesday night, on December 5th, I mean, on December 5th, we'll be in North Reading, and on December 15th, we'll be in Wilmington. And that will be, and we're looking to probably try to meet with the towns at least twice a year and give them updates on our projects, along with the normal budget process and other things that we do. So I think that'll be a good level of communication, and everyone seems satisfied so far. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Okay, power supply report from Jane.
Good evening, I'm here to report on this September purchase power summary. RMLD's load for September came in at 58.9 million kilowatt hours, and that was approximately a 1% increase when we compare that to September 2013. Our energy costs for the month came in at 2.4 million, and that's equivalent to around 4 cents per kilowatt hour. In September, the fuel charge was set at 4.5 cents, and RMLD's sales totaled 61.1 million kilowatt hours. As a result, RMLD overcollected by 317,000, resulting in the deferred fuel cash reserve balance of $5.9 million. Just to note that that's typically a little higher than we normally have that. However, given the upcoming winter period and the constraint on natural gas, we anticipate going through a lot of that reserve money. And so rather than lowering it and then having to escalate it, we're trying to levelize it for our consumers, so that the impact will be moderate at best. So the, the field charge has remained at 4.5 cents, and it's currently anticipated to go to 5 cents for December. On the spot market, we purchased 17% of our energy requirements from the ISO at an average cost of $38 per megawatt hour. If we look at capacity, our peak demand for September occurred on September 2nd at 150 megawatts, and this compares to a peak demand of last year of 156 megawatts. The temperature differential, which is the leading driver for our peak demand, it was 95 degrees last September and was only 87 this, so that would pretty much account for this 6-megawatt decrease. On the capacity side, we were required to maintain capacity of 208 megawatts, and our total capacity dollars for the month of September were at 1.4 million, and that's equivalent to a little less than $7 per kilowatt month. If we look at Table 4, it shows both our capacity and our energy as well as the generation by resource. The average cost for capacity and energy came in around 6.4 cents, and for the month of September, around 3.6% of our resources were generated from hydro or renewable source. Table 5 looks at the four hydro projects where RMLD receives a renewable energy certificate per the PPA. As of September, we, the RMLD has banked or is anticipating to bank a little over 12,000 REX, and that has an estimated market value of about 503,000. We're actively marking that, marketing that. Once we receive any revenue for that, that goes against the field charge, so that all of our customers receive the benefit of a reduced fuel charge from any sales of the renewable energy certificates. Table 6 looks at transmission for the month of September. Transmission's cost came in at 1.1 million, and that's down about 9% when you compare that from August, and that's based on our monthly peak demand. If we look at Tables 70 and 8, RMLD processed only one commercial lighting rebate in September, and that was for about $9,400. That was a lighting rebate that saved about 10 kilowatts on the capacity side and about 30 megawatt hours annually on the energy side. On the residential side, we processed 156 residential appliance rebates for a little less than 8,000, and 19 residential customers had energy audits on our system. And that's my power supply report.
I have a question, and listen to me, it's unrelated to your report, but the other day, I saw the superintendent at town meeting, and we got to talking about this topic of photovoltaics. The Lincoln Sudbury School District is doing a PV canopy in its parking lot and is claiming they're going to have a savings of $2 million over 20 years. And I'm wondering, I realize that's a different utility, it's higher rates, there's more to save. I'm just wondering, do the, do the various parts, are they talking to each other? Is the superintendent talking to us? Are we talking to the town? Do we have a common understanding of what's possible? Is this, basically, is it possible here?
Yeah, we'd be open to conversations. I know we're talking with Wilmington, because they have a lot of new schools, and the CAV members have actively involved us in looking at photovoltaic. We're working with a commercial customer in developing a parking canopy. And again, that's set up through a PPA, because, because we're a closed system, we don't allow third-party vendors to come in and sell electricity to our customers.
Right.
So there's options there where the customer can purchase the solar to offset their use, and then if capital is an issue, we can work with a third-party developer to sell the power to us as part of our portfolio.
Right.
And then, in the, in the particular case where we're working with the canopy, the customer receives, you know, the solar, you know, the solar will go wherever it's, you know, most likely into the building, and then they have the shaded for the, for the parking.
The, the superintendent said to me that he thought there was an issue with credits that weren't available anymore, that he was told by somebody at RMLD some years ago that there was some inadequate credits out there. I don't know what he was...
The state recently came out with their Phase 2 for SREC, which is the Solar Energy Renewable Certificates. Those are considerably more valuable in order to incentivize the development, because it becomes cost prohibitive, it's not really competitive. So the state has the SREC, and that just came out in April or May.
Okay.
So it may be just, you know, the Phase 1 versus the Phase 2.
So, I mean, obviously, the superintendent of Schools is a very busy person with lots of things going on. I sense from him that he would love to make this happen at the Reading schools.
Yeah, we just had a meeting, someone from my group just met with, Reading has a new director of their facilities, and we were, we had a meeting, the individual in my group had a meeting with that person last week to explain our peak demand reduction program, and Reading seemed very enthusiastic about the possibility of signing up and being able to reduce load and receive an economic payment for that.
Right.
So we can reach out to her maybe as a starting point?
I think, I think I would, if I may, and I don't want to meddle, but it would be worthwhile to reach out directly to the superintendent, because he specifically said he would like to do this, and his impression from some prior conversation that he had with somebody at RMLD, I don't know what that was, was that it wasn't feasible for some reason. And I'm sure that it's the kind of thing where a man in his position has a lot of things to worry about running the schools, but would love to hear from RMLD saying, you know what, this can be done, and kind of laying it out for him. If I was him, I'd certainly want to get that. So if you can, reach out to him and explain to him directly, write to, write to John.
Be happy to.
Thank you. And I assume the same, the same communication could, you know, we have a relatively new town manager, and I don't know how much, he also has a huge amount on his plate, that whether he is, knows all these things.
I think it could be the timing too, because I know last year, I mean, prior to Colleen coming, the town had a committee that was looking at buildings within the school system, and, you know, we didn't have Colleen here, so there was some question as to whether it was economical or not. So by all means, we'll definitely reach out.
That's good. That would be great, and I think, yeah, that'd be good for everybody. So that was my one piece of feedback.
Yep, we'll take care of it.
Thank you.
I just have the streetlight rate.
Oh, yep, yes, go ahead.
Keep going.
As part of the cost of service in the pilot LED street program, we are, we are in need of filing a municipal LED rate. And what that will do, it will capture the cost of the LED fixtures over the life of those, of those fixtures, which is estimated to be 25 years. It includes the avoidance of the maintenance, which they last longer, that we won't have to go out there long, as often to replace them. So we've developed an LED streetlight that would be available to the towns of Reading, Linfield, North Reading, and Wilmington. There's four different fixture types currently being proposed. There's a 25-watt LED, 101 watt, 93 watt flood, and 134 watt flood. So this rate would be applicable to the towns. On average, when you compare it to the existing rate that they pay for, which is the formula rate for the high-pressure sodiums or the mercury bakers, depending on the type of fixtures, the town should be saving between 30 to 40% with the filing of this new rate.
What does that, what do you think that adds up to for the town?
When we were at Reading, we have the numbers. I think Balalashir estimated that he pays about 200,000 for his streetlights, for his streetlight accounts, so it would be 30 to 40% of that.
Significant, yeah.
That's a great, that's a good number. That's great.
So the CAV requested that we get those preliminary numbers to them, so we'll be providing to each CAV members for each town. And this rate was presented to the CAV on Wednesday, and it was unanimously approved to be by.
Great. Do we need to vote on this now?
Yeah, we should vote on this, right.
Before I forget, that, reach out to the school, you might want to have it be to the school committee as well, so that, because I know that, just from talk that I've heard in town, that they're all interested in it, and just put it out to all of them. Thank you. So do we need a motion on the...
Yep, yep, I'm ready whenever you are, Mr. Chairman.
...LED streetlight rate?
I'm ready whenever you are, Mr. Chairman. I move to the RMLD Board of Commissioners, approve the proposed LED streetlight rates for the town of Reading, North Reading, Wilmington, and Linfield, and to file as such with the, with the state.
Second. All in favor? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you, Jane.
Thank you, Jane.
So are we on to Hamid?
Hamid.
Engineering and Operations Report.
Hello. The first page on my report, the capital improvements, you see the construction projects and listed the new service, customer service connections for both commercials and residential. These are the activities that you see that will happen in the month of September. The second page indicates the routine constructions, which we got a number of categories, and they added up to, for the month of September, 475,329, and the year-to-date was 543,551 dollars total. These are all the capital projects that were completed. Under the special projects and capital purchases, we completed, as Colleen mentioned, LED streetlight pilot program, 100% completed for the month of September. It cost us 1,335. SCADA system upgrade, I'm glad to announce that the server is installed and the new software is installed, up and running. So that's the basics for our new automation system and program that we have in place of, for the roadmap for smart grid and automation. Under the maintenance program, we have developed six programs, and all of these six programs are moving along, which they're, they play a major role in reliability, and they're very important. The age overload transformer replacement for Padmo Transformers, single-phase, three-phase, we got single-phase approximately 11% replaced, three-phase approximately 6.5%, the overhead single-phase 8%, 8.3%, the three-phase approximately 2%, and this project is ongoing until we replace all the aged transformers as were reported in previous Board meetings. The pole testing system-wide for the month of September, we had all of the 640 poles that they were slated to be inspected for the year, the contractors completed 435 that were inspected. I'm happy to announce that that program is all now completed, 100% completed. We had some portions of poles that were tested, they failed the test, there were about 22, 22 poles that they were condemned, and all of those, they are being replaced.
That's, that's keeping an accident from, from happening, right?
Exactly.
Wow, that's great.
That's a very important program, that's for both public safety and employee safety.
How many poles?
Taking that very seriously. Yes, I'm sorry.
I was just going to ask you, how old are those? How long have they been in the ground?
The poles, they were, they're ranging from anywhere from 30 to 40, 50 years, some of them 50 years old.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
These, all of these maintenance programs are new. The pole testing program, once we get the GIS, this will be collected, and generally, when you go out and you collect the data, you'll take and assess the poles and the age, and so once this is done, it'll, it'll keep going forward. But what I wanted to mention was, there hadn't been a double pole tracking, you had sent me an email.
Right, right.
So Verizon is going to a brand-new software January 1st, so we're signed up, and the way that works is because as we're replacing all these poles, in addition to all the poles that are out there that are double that we don't know of yet, that we have to go out and collect, what happens is, as the pole goes in, the transfer for electric, it goes to ball in our court, then it goes to Comcast, it goes ball in their court, then it goes to Fire, or Verizon, then Fire, and then who's responsible for taking the butt out, they get the last ball in court, and it comes out. And you'll get a nice spreadsheet. We'll be able to, you know, have a real list of how many we have, how many we're getting. And in, I even mentioned to the selectmen that, you know, if we've made all the transformer and Comcast is holding them up, it's a great sheet to go forward in front of those selectmen and say, listen, we want to get rid of these double poles. You put a little pressure on Comcast or whatever. Not to say that they don't transfer quickly, but it's a much better way of accountability than we have right now. So we're moving to that January first. But because of the amount of poles we're gonna be replacing, because of the age and they're not passing the test, it'll be added to it.
The name of the program is NJUNS. That's a new-
It's the new Verizon.
Yeah, new Verizon pole tracking system that we already signed up for it. Our team, they're being trained on that. So it's a very good program. They used to, it used to be inquest and inquest. For some reason, the licensing, you know, they was expired and then they moved to the new system. And it's already working great, so.
Double poles are unsightly, as you called, and so I'm just letting everyone know that we're working on it. We're trying to get them out of there.
Just to fill anybody who's watching, I got an email from Camille Anthony, who's a former member of the Board of Selectmen in Reading, asking about unsightly double poles and what we were doing about them. So that's part of why we're discussing it tonight and responding to that.
That's been a topic I've heard about on the twenty, twenty, over twenty-eight years. It's not a new topic.
Funny doing something about it.
I'm glad to see we're actually doing a little better tracking.
Exactly, actually taking inventory and getting the data and dealing with it. I have a quick question. What happens, I'm sure it's never happened, but if a pole was to fail and hurt somebody and it turned out that the thing had been in there for forty-five years and nobody knew, what's the liability for that?
I don't know. Whatever be a circumstance, I mean, the wires are helping to hold it up. You know, when you have guy anchors and the guy anchors have to be properly sized, there'd be a number of reasons. Obviously, having a pole inspection program is really important to prevent that.
Sure.
Exactly what would happen, you know, poles have fallen over in other communities and thank God people haven't gotten hurt. It would depend on legal team. Well, it would depend on the legal team for negligence or whatever. It would be case by case, depending on-
And if someone drove into the pole, obviously, that's a different story.
You would sue everybody in sight.
Right, exactly.
Many people as you contend, you'd name in the suit.
But we don't suggest that.
We have also improved our engineering practices, we've added the software that, you know, we could calculate, called Pole Formant, which captures guide tension, guide calculation. So we guide the poles properly, you know, any new constructions and old constructions. The areas that we spot that potentially could be troublesome, you know, so.
We're trying to stay ahead of it, so let's not, nothing's gonna-
Okay, I did not say any of that.
It's just good that we have a program now.
What I was getting at was that, trying to just drive home why what you're doing is so important. Okay, are we?
Okay, we got another program, very important program. It's a quarterly inspections of our thirteen eighth KV, thirty-five KV feeders. And those are the listed feeders that you see that have been inspected. The reason we do them, we make sure that everything is safe and sound. And so far, everything, there were no problems. We found, we few vines in some areas that they were removed and, you know, cleared from the lines. Demand whole inspection is gonna get started in the winter. We got also porcelain cutouts replacements that we, that's another program that we continuously inspecting and replacing the porcelain cutouts with the polymer type, which is much safer. Also at the substations, that's a new program that we instituted that for infrared scanning on a monthly basis of other assets at all substations. And I'm glad to report that, you know, ever since we've done that, we've on few spots, but they're all taken care of and they're all fixed. And there are no more problems, no, nothing potentially that could cause any trouble. The substation maintenance program, I'm glad to announce that this program is almost coming to an end. We only got four more breakers to test and that would make that a hundred percent completed. As a result of that, we picked up few potential problems that they're fixed. The last one being fixed next week. And that would put an end to this very important maintenance program. Under the system reliability, we got the system average interruption duration index that you see for the month of September, up to September was eighteen point eight-six, which is well below the national and regional average. The system average interruption frequency index also was point four, which is below the national and the regional average. The next page, customer average interruption duration index also was well below the regional and national average. It was forty-seven point five zero, which is well below regional and national average. The next page, the pie chart that you see shows the list of the audages, the cause of the audages by types. And we had about thirty-four, thirty-four percent equipment failure, trees, thirty-four percent, wildlife, twenty-one percent. And the rest, as you could see, that, you know, well, some human errors and nouns and natural causes, the weather-related issues that constitutes six percent of those audages. And that concludes my report. If there are no questions, I would love to move on. I have some bids that I would like to get your permission to proceed. If there are no questions.
You got the financial report? You wanna take the bids or do the financial reports?
Do the bids.
I wanna do the bids?
Yeah. You can do the bids. You do the bids and then Bob can come up.
Okay. Bids then Bob.
Bids then Bob. The best for last.
All right, the first bid is the SNC Skater M switches that were sent out to, we wanted to purchase four of the, two of those and two switches that cost fifty-five thousand seventy dollars. And we received a bid from Wesco, Graybar, and Stuart Erby. And the successful bidder was Stuart C. Erby for a total cost of fifty-five thousand seventy dollars. So I respectfully request to vote this bid to award it to Stuart Erby, if I may.
You have a motion.
Phil, you wanna do the motion?
Yeah. Move that bid two thousand fifteen dash six for SNC Skater dash CX switch be awarded to Stuart C. Erby for a total cost of fifty-five thousand oh seven oh as the lowest qualified bid in the recommendation to general manager.
Okay. All in favor? Vote four to oh.
Thank you. The next one is the bid number two thousand fifteen dash zero eight. That's a single-phase pole-mounted transformers. We had about, we had sixty-six of those. The bid was received from Wesco Power Sales Group, Stuart Erby, Graybar. And if you could, and the bid award is being awarded to Power Sales Group for a total amount of three thousand, three hundred for six of those units, five KVA. And the rest goes to Wesco for a total cost of seventy-five thousand eight hundred eighty dollars. I respectfully request to vote on this bid as well.
Okay. Move that bid two thousand fifteen dash oh eight for single-phase pad-mounted transformers be awarded to Power Sales Group for a total cost of thirty-three hundred dollars. And Wesco for a total cost of seventy-five thousand eight eight oh as the lowest qualified bid in the recommendation to the general manager.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Vote carries four oh.
Thank you. The third one is bid two thousand fifteen dash nine for three-phase pole-mounted transformers that we received a bid from Wesco and Power Sales Group. They were, these bids were sent out to seventeen suppliers and we just received the response back from Wesco and Power Sales Group. The successful bidder was Wesco for a total cost of seventy-nine thousand ninety-six dollars. I respectfully request to vote on this bid as well.
Okay, interview. Move that bid two thousand fifteen dash nine for three-phase pad-mounted transformers be awarded to Wesco for a total cost of seventy-nine thousand oh ninety-six as the lowest qualified bid in the recommendation to general manager.
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries four oh.
Thank you so much. And the last one is bid two thousand fifteen dash eleven for seven hundred fifty MCM cable that we received bid from Stuart Erby and Arthur Hurley Company, Yale Electric, and Okanite Company. And the successful bidder was the Arthur Hurley Company for a total amount of a hundred thirty-nine thousand five hundred ninety. The quantity is nine thousand nine hundred feet. So I respectfully request to vote on this bid as to award the bid to Arthur Hurley Company as well.
Move that bid two thousand fifteen dash eleven for seven fifty MCM cable be awarded to Arthur J. Hurley Company, Inc. for a total cost of a hundred thirty-nine thousand five ninety as the lowest qualified bid in the recommendation to general manager.
Second.
All in favor?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to abstain because Arthur J. Hurley is a client of a client. So he probably puts two cents in my pocket, maybe.
Okay. Then we'll reduce it by two cents. All in favor?
Oh, abstain.
Three, three zero.
Three, zero, one.
Three, zero, one. Okay. That's nine thousand feet of cable for a hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars.
That's a good price.
What is this?
This is seven fifty MCM cable. It's really about maybe-
Very heavy.
One and a half inch. Maybe to pull.
Okay. Are we all set?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hameed.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight I'm gonna be presenting the September financials, which represents the close of the first quarter for the period of July to September. So for the month of, for the first two months of September, for the month of September, the net income of positive change was six hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars, which increased our net income to about three point five million. We had budget at this point, net income of about three point four million, which resulted in net income being over budget by about eighty-two thousand dollars, about two and a half percent. The actual year-to-date fuel revenues exceeded fuel expenses by one point eight million. Now, looking at page eleven B, the revenue section, year-to-date operating revenues are under budget by about a million dollars, a three point seven percent. The actual operating revenues came in at twenty-four point eight million, compared to the budgeted amount of twenty-five point eight million. Just to take a second here. I'm still presenting the financials based on the budgets that were approved back in the spring, which were the bundled rates. We're in the process now, we obviously have unbundled our rates effective July one. I'm hoping by the October financial statements, which we'll be presenting at the December board meeting, to have the unbundled rates on the revenue and the expense side of the power costs. And going forward, that's the way we'll operate. But through the first three months, it's kind of apples and oranges with the bundled versus unbundled, but we'll get that squared away, hopefully, for the October financial presentation. Continuing on, on page twelve A, the expenses. Year-to-date purchased power base expenses under budget by about eleven thousand dollars or a tenth of one percent. The actual purchased base power costs and the budgeted power base costs were at seven point nine million. The year-to-date operating maintenance expenses were combined under budget by about four hundred thousand dollars, a little less than eleven percent. The actual ONM came in at three point two million, compared to the budgeted amount of three point six million. Depreciation expense and the voluntary payments to the four towns are on budget. Cash on page nine, the operating fund is a little over eleven million dollars. The capital fund balance is at five point three million. The rate stabilization fund is at six point seven million. Deferred fuel is at five point nine million. And the energy conservation fund is at five hundred eighty-two thousand dollars. On the general information side, looking at page five, year-to-date kilowatt-hour sales were at a hundred ninety-four million, which is about seven point four million kilowatt-hours, or about three point six percent behind last year's actual figure. Lastly, on the budget variance side, curiously, the five divisions are under budget by four hundred and five thousand dollars, or about seven point two percent.
May I ask a question?
Certainly, may.
Can we go to page eleven B so that in the event that the commissioners are looking at the financials in detail, if you go to eleven B? Do you have eleven B? Okay. So the actual year-to-date on residential obviously differs to the budget, right? By a change of fifty-one percent. Bob can explain this, but the first column is unbundled, the second column is the budget. So what we need to do is put-
That's a big difference, right.
An unbundled budget in there. So if you go down, you can see a new line item called purchase power capacity for eight million dollars that's in the unbundled, but zero in the budget. So right now, unbundling everything, you know, just pulling out the line item is one thing, but unbundling it from each of the rate classes is taking a little bit longer. So I just didn't want you to be confused by that and, because when I looked at the percentages, I was like, moly, moly.
It's crazy, yeah.
So, yeah, so that's the difference, is we've got it unbundled, but the budget is still bundled. So by October, we should be able to have those financial formats. And I know some of the selectmen had asked for-
Be December.
December, I mean, for October around financials.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. General discussion?
None. I do hope this is our last Friday, I do hope this is our last Friday meeting.
Everybody said it was yours.
All in favor?
Well, listen, I have to clean my bowling ball.
Okay, so I guess we're just discussing the next board meetings and the journey to executive session, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. So our next board meeting will be Thursday, December eleventh, in this room at seven thirty. And then Thursday, January twenty-ninth, in twenty fifteen. And the Citizens Advisory Board meeting is Wednesday, November fifteenth. And that's due?
No, it's one on December seventeenth.
Okay. Oh, right, November nineteenth has happened already. I just noticed that.
Yes, I attended. I was liaising that night.
Okay. With that, so we need a motion on going into executive session?
I'll move, we go into executive session based on chapter one sixty-four, section forty-seven D, exemption from public records and open meeting requirements in certain instances to discuss mitigation and union negotiation and negotiations update and to return to regular session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Okay. All in favor, poll the board?
We got that right, Hameed?
Aye.
Aye.
So what?
It's the forty-seven D exemption.
And forty-seven, okay. All right, so what should come out? We don't have to, so to discuss mediation and that should come out? Okay, I didn't say that.
Okay, so amended, second.
Right.
Second, okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Bassino, aye.
Mr. Talbot, aye. John Snepak, aye. Tom O'Rourke, aye. And with that, we go into executive session?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.